Why this isn't being done as a ordinance? As far as your question, whether, long as Mike Brown approved of it, the fact that he's not present doesn't preclude him from being the sponsor of an ordinance or resolution. So, as long as he does not have any issue with his name being used, he would not be precluded from producing the ordinance. The other name-
I have a question. I'm sorry. Normally when we do these, they are resolutions, aren't they? They're normally called a declaratory resolution, is what I thought. Isn't that what they're normally called instead of an ordinance? Or am I, am I missing something?
Now, that is where I've seen them in the past, coming at us this way.
Okay, I don't, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I went out. I missed half of Councilwoman Brown's question.
Normally, when we do these resolutions for, I'm assuming this is for tax abatement, normally it is called a declaratory resolution, not an ordinance.
That's true. That's true. I was not aware that this was a tax abatement, though. Is that what this is?
Yes.
I assume that that's what this is.
It is.
It is tax abatement, yes.
Alright, then that answers that question.
Okay.
I do have a question following up on the issue that Councilman Brewer raised about the sponsorship. So, will the order be done by the administration or done by the councilmen? Go on, third and final.
I could- I can only say in the past that the abatement resolutions had been presented by the administration.
Do we know what's the reason for putting a council member's name as a sponsor? Who's not getting in the proceedings?
Only that he, I don't know. I, we would have to ask Councilman Brown. Again, if participation or not would not preclude him from being listed?
Well, based on past practice, I'm sorry. Based on past practice, it has never been one of the councilpersons who has been, has sponsored part of the resolution if it's for tax abatement. It has not been one of the councilpersons. Now, I don't know if there's something special about this one, but in the past, it has not been one of the councilpersons.
Well, my question was going on the language, how it read.
Okay, okay.
So, that's why I asked the question, you know, about other members, non-council members being sponsors on it because of the language.
Okay.
Speak to the language and how we got to this point here. I would appreciate that. Let's get some clarification. And I don't know, I know it's storming over here by me. I don't know what if anybody else, if we could lose connection.
But I guess what we're asking is, can someone from the administration explain the history or rationale of the sponsorship of the, of the resolution?
I think we have Rodney Poe, our city attorney, on the line. Rodney, are you on the line?
I am, I am here. And I will say that, as far as the spot, I helped put together, I brought in Dan Bodich, who's done most of our, if not all of the tax abatements in the, in the city's past, and most of them, in my understanding, several other municipalities in the past. I cannot speak to exactly the sponsorship aspect of it. I don't, I wasn't part of the the conversations as to finding who's a sponsor, but I, you know, my, my understanding is that, you know, ultimately, you know, this was a, is a project that's been proposed to redevelopment. You know, redevelopment and community investment really, you know, we really found this, you know, this to be an important project. As part of that, as part of the incentive for, you know, for bringing this project to the city whereby over on the 700 block between, between Broadway and Massachusetts, there was going to be a project. This project, Broadway Lofts, they've brought forth, you know, I know that they've discussed this with some of the councilmembers, obviously with the administration. It's a great project that's being put forward, but I mean, to, as far as the answer to the question of sponsorship, I unfortunately cannot answer that.
Well, I cannot answer that, but what I do know is if it's an ordinance that has to do with, with dollars, okay? It is not, it is not the council, the administration. It's the administration. So, I don't, I don't know why. I don't understand why.
And who draft, so who drafted the ordinance? Who wrote the language on there? With Mike Brown's name?
Ms. Bodich?
That would be me.
Okay, so have you had conversations with Councilman Brown?
So, Councilman, Councilman Godwin, I normally draft the resolution for, under Indiana Code six dash one dash one dash twelve point one, which is, and I know there's kept in conversation as whether it's a resolution or ordinance, it is a, by resolution that an economic revitalization area-
Right.
-is approved. And I've looked up two other abatements that the city council of Gary has passed. And there's always been a city councilwoman or city councilman that has sponsored that. Now, on, to answer your question, when I draft them, I normally do not put in the sponsors. The city does that. The administration does that. They usually and typically find the councilman-at-large or that lives in the general area and the district councilman to sponsor that resolution.
So, Ty Atkins is the, or your councilwoman where it is, so who filled in the blank, I guess, is the question?
And let me just, if it's okay to add, you know, I did get a chance to talk to Pete, Pete, I can't pronounce your last name, from the development company today, and that was a point that I wanted to make to the administration. I thought it was interesting that, you know, I had to find out about this opportunity via an agenda item on this meeting. So, I think that, you know, we should just be more aware about being collaborative and making sure that we bring in the right partners at the right time when these things occur, instead of after the fact.
Well, we, let me say, I'm, I'm, I keep going back, you know, to, and Mr. Bodich remembers, keep going back to where we've done tax abatements in the past. And when we've done them in the past, we have always, always brought in a, a councilperson. So, I don't know what might have happened with this one, but that's what we've always done in the past. So, I don't know.
And Councilwoman Brown, this is Dan Bodich.
Okay, hi.
Good afternoon. And I've worked with you many times on these in the past, and you are accurate. There's usually, there is always a council member as a sponsor. But normally, and I found this interesting, that it was placed into the Planning and Development Subcommittee of the Council?
Instead of Finance.
Instead of Finance, because normally I would come to you.
Right. It's normally in Finance, yes.
Right. But in reality, this is the first step, because it's a resolution. It's a declaratory resolution designating an economic revitalization area, or an ERA, for the purpose of the project owner to submit formally and for the council to consider a Form SB1 for the tax abatement to be approved. You have to be in an ERA as a geographical area or district in order to formally submit that request in the Form SB1. So, this is the first step. And the second step is for, assuming it's considered and approved by the council at, in full, then it's filed with the Lake County Assessor by statute. And at that point, it's set up for a public hearing by the council, and then there's a confirming declaratory resolution similar to tax increment financing. So, there's, there's always a second resolution for the ERA. Once the ERA is designated, then the council considers the Form SB1 real property. And Councilwoman Brown, you, you would know from experience, or at least hopefully you remember, is that you would normally get the ERA declaratory resolution as well as the Form SB1 resolution at one time. So, you have all the resolutions up front. So that when it's, assuming it's confirmed after a public hearing, you can then consider and make a determination on the Form SB1 resolution. We keep them separate because there's two separate issues.
Yes.
So-
I do remember, yeah.
Can I go back to the initial question?
Right.
I mean, obviously, we have members of the, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I think it's important if members' names are being put on documents, somebody should know who put it there and based on what.
Well, I want to say this, and then I'm done. What we normally do with tax abatement, when it is assigned to committee, it is normally assigned to Finance. Okay? Now, I don't know why Councilwoman Atkins was not informed about this, this abatement, because what we have done in the past is we've had conversations with redevelopment when we were getting ready to do abatements. And they've talked to us about it, and I don't know why there was no discussion about this one. I don't, I don't have any idea on that. But that's the way it's been done in the past. There has been some conversation with redevelopment and with the, with the person whose district that it's in. And then the resolution is assigned normally to Finance. And that is normally the way we've done it. So, and but it's up to the president to assign an ordinance or resolution to whatever committee he chooses.
Just to, so I'm just trying to be clear. I know I'm beating the horn, but who wrote the resolution?
Okay.
You know, Dan wrote it, and he said he didn't put a council member's name in it, and nobody's taking responsibility for who put the council member's name in it. I just don't understand that. It's an easy question.
I do not, Council, Councilman Godwin, I normally do not include a council member's name on a resolution because tho, those negotiations and discussions are outside of my purview. So, normally that's added in once the administration identifies a sponsor for the resolution.
So, thank you, Dan. So, identify the sponsor for the resolution.
We're not gonna get that answer, Councilman Godwin. We're not gonna get that answer. Let's just-
I mean, this is not, you know-
Well, and it's a serious question there, because Councilman Brown is out on sick leave at this time. And I think it's very important that his name is not just being put somewhere and we don't know about that he's actually given permission to do it, because he has been out for an amount of time. And for a name just to appear somewhere on a document like this, I think it's important to make sure that he's aware of this.
We've had these conversations time after time as it related to tax abatement and the redevelopment commission. What they would normally do is come to the council before it is placed on the agenda. I have no idea why no one spoke to anyone on the council about this particular ordinance. So, that's what has normally been done in the past. There was some, there's always been some discussion with someone from the council from redevelopment. That's the way we've done it.
And Councilwoman Brown, and I apologize if I'm overstepping my bounds in speaking, but I want to make sure. But Councilwoman Brown, typically, and you are correct, and I've been involved in some meetings where I've been asked to sit down with yourself as the Finance Committee Chairperson to just review the process and the project and what was going to be presented so that you were aware of what was happening. So, I, I was not privy to those conversations. I was asked to prepare a resolution and the analysis for the abatement per se.
I'm gonna keep asking the same question, Mr. Chair. We have Rodney Poe on the line, A.J. Bittner, Greg Jenkins, and the Corporation Council. Did anybody who's on this call participate in the drafting of this resolution?
So, if I could, Councilman Godwin, I'm looking at, I'm going through my notes right now. You know, we've been trying to figure out exactly when anything was added to it, because as, as Mr. Bodich had pointed out, he had put together, you know, he was, he was the one that had drafted this, as, you know, as he has for most of them in the past. And I could tell you, I did not personally have any conversations with, you know, with Councilman Mike Brown. But in looking at this, I, I mean, I don't recall putting in the sponsors, but I know that I was the individual that, that passed this information, or the the resolution onto the clerk's office. I don't think anybody made any changes. I mean, it would have had to have been me. I don't know if I just had, had, in putting together the last portion of it, had copied and pasted portions of a, of a prior ordinance or resolution, and they just, they just were carried over. I'm honestly not, you know, I'm not certain how exactly those got on there. But I mean, I can confirm that I did not personally have a conversation with Councilman Mike Brown about this ordinance.
The problem had been in the past, has been on several tax abatements in the past, is that redevelopment did not have any discussion with the council prior to. Okay, that, that had been a problem in the past. And so, what we had decided is that redevelopment would always talk to the council before they submitted a resolution for tax abatement. But no one from redevelopment came to anybody, as far as I know, on the council and talked to them about this resolution. But that is the way that it's been done in the past. They've talked to the council members because there's been, so there have been occasions where the council did not agree with the tax abatement before the resolution was even drawn up. So, I don't know what happened this time. I have no idea. But that is the way it's been done in the past.
Let me just say, this is very troublesome to sit here and have a planning meeting, and no one can tell us how a sponsor magically appeared on the document. And you all, I guess, expect me to continue to go on with this meeting here when we can't get one simple question answered for our sponsorship. And someone, one of our colleagues' name is on there, he's not able to be, join this meeting here, and no one can give the answer how his name appeared on this document. I think that's very troublesome at this time. I mean, we have several attorneys on the phone. We have the person who drafted it, who voted and drafted it, but no one can actually tell who, how his name got on here. And that's a problem for me.
Councilman Brewer, I will go through my notes to see where or how that, how the sponsorships were added to determine that for you. It is always, and it's always deemed a preliminary or draft resolution until such time that it goes, officially goes to the council after the Finance Committee, but in this case, the Planning and Development Committee.
That's true.
Well, I think the committee is irrelevant, right? The process should work either way.
Right.
But even if it's an investigations committee, right? I mean, at the end of the day, there's a chair of the committee. There's committees, right? And there's this body. And if a member's name is on a document, certainly we presume that there has been a conversation with that member. I've asked the question three different ways, three different times, and no one can give a straightforward answer about how, and I guess Casper did it. I don't know, but how it ended up on the document. This is a serious thing. You know, when you hear tax abatements, the public wants to know why, who, what, a lot of questions.
There should be someone here from redevelopment to tell this council how or why we are planning to do tax abatement with this particular property. There is no one here from redevelopment that I see who is able to answer that. And that had been a problem in the past. If there was a, a resolution that was for tax abatement, someone from redevelopment would have discussed it with the council prior to the resolution being drawn up and brought before the council. Now, that's, that's what I can recall.
I'm just a-
If I may, Councilman Brewer? The- Typically, what would happen also is that at the, the committee meeting, the project owner would give a, an overview of the project. And then the, myself or someone from redevelopment would give an overview of the resolution itself and the approval process and go through the time schedule. And if there were any questions at that point, there would be answers or technical answers to the questions.
I understand how the process works. I jumped to a problem that I saw at the beginning before we give it, even get into it. There's a serious problem with the sponsorship. So, I understand there should be an overview going on, but I have a problem with the sponsorship even moving forward before we can get to an overview. Yeah. I don't feel like the sponsor, the proper sponsorship is on this resolution at this time. And no one can tell me anything how any of these names appeared on here, Mike Brown or anyone else. Because if you look at the document, it reads, it's the Gary Common Council Resolution. So, it's reading that it's the Gary Common Council Resolution, but you have the mayor as a sponsor on here. You have redevelopment as a sponsor on here. You have community investment as a sponsor on here. How is it, how can these individuals be a sponsor on something that's probably come from the Gary Common Council? If it's read, this is the way it's written here. Declaratory, declaratory resolution of the Gary Common Council.
And if I can, I mean, again, I'm, I'm gonna have to fall on the sword. This is Rodney. I'm gonna have to fall on the sword on this, because as, as Dan stated, Dan got us up to the finish line. I had to be the one that actually put together this. I, in all honesty, must have just looked at a prior tax abatement, you know, started filling in the, you know, basically the signature portions of it and had to have included that. And, and it would have, it would have had to have been an overview or an oversight on my part. I'm, I'm gonna have to be the one that falls on that. I was sitting here thinking, well, maybe it came from somewhere else, but you know, if there is no other explanation, then it had to have been me.
And Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown and-
Yes.
I'm looking at the, an old abatement from 2015 that was for TMB2. And I'm looking at this, I'm just bringing, just as an example from past experience. That resolution was for an ERA was sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman-Wilson. And then the second name is Councilman Kyle W. Allen, Senior at Large. Then the next listed is City of Gary Department of Commerce. And then lastly is the Gary Economic Development Corporation, Inc.
Right.
I just wanted to give an example of one of a sponsorship in the past. And I'm not saying that's accurate today, but I, you know, I will make sure or work with the city administration to make sure the sponsorships are accurate.
Yeah, Dan, and that's not your, I appreciate that, but that's not your, your responsibility. I mean, that was, that would have had to have been something that, that, you know, we really should have had better communication with the council and redevelopment and the partners. I mean, to the council's point, that's a fair point that they're making. And again, I do appreciate that, but again, this had to have been something. I know that there was, you know, we were approaching, you know, this, the, the deadline to get this on the last council meeting, to get it before the, you know, before the Finance Committee here. And so, it had to have been an oversight, and I do apologize. But yeah, I mean, I don't think that there's gonna be a better explanation of it than that.
And we'll correct the issue now that we've identified what the oversight was. We'll correct the issue if we want, if you want, we'll entertain us withdrawing it for this Planning Commission meeting and getting it squared away properly. We will do that in order to address the discrepancy.
Well, I'm not saying it even had to be withdrawn, but what I'm saying is, I think we, I didn't want this to go unnoticed, you know, that there was a problem here. And it seemed like didn't no one know anything about how these sponsors got here. Councilman Atkins, have something?
I just feel that, you know, the, the template is important, but I do feel like the conversation is making a minimum. So, I appreciate, you know, the last comment in terms of, you know, them correcting it. But I think the more important issue is that you have to make sure that we are collaborating with the council upfront. And also that you are identifying the appropriate person who should be involved in that. So, if the administration could work on that as well or let us know, you know, what will be the process going forward? I think that will be something that we need to identify as well.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Atkins, your point is well taken. I will discuss this issue with Mr. Bittner's supervisor, as well as the other appropriate individuals in the Redevelopment Commission, just so that we make sure going forward, our lines of communication are worked better.
And before I allow the overview to go forward, on the last page, the signature page here, where it says presented by me, I guess that's the clerk, it says mayor, it should be changed from her to him, or yes? For her approval, it should be him?
Thank you very much.
Alright. I'll, I'll entertain an overview at this time.
And just, if I may, Councilman, Councilman, there, and on Exhibit A, the first line, it does say the Broadway Lofts Economic Revitalization Area. It says economic twice. I've corrected that to remove that, that economics being in there twice.
Okay. So, we'll make them, okay. So, overview at this time?
Yeah.
Donna, do you want me as the developer to present? I was certain if, okay, great. Thank you, and I apologize. And hello, everyone. And my name's Pete Schwegerat, and I'm with MVAH Partners. Thank you for giving me some time today. Councilwoman Atkins, thank you for having a conversation with me on the phone. I'm sorry there was a little delay in the communication getting through. This development is kind of been in work for, for, for a little over almost three years now, and we are excited about nearing the finish and certainly want to introduce everyone and get one everybody up to speed. So, thanks for giving us some time. We approached the previous administration about three years ago, recognizing and having interest in supporting the community with housing. There's a need in the community. There's very limited new product and options in the community. And I started working with the Redevelopment Commission to identify sites and opportunities that might be suited to bring new housing options to market. The vision at that point was a multi-generational housing development that could serve the workforce seniors and potentially provide opportunity for ownership within a multi-phase development. We wanted to focus in and around near downtown so that the development and the new investment could have a, an impact on, on hopefully growing and improving and encouraging other new redevelopment in the downtown area. We worked with the Development Commission to, and probably discussed over the time dozens of sites that are Redevelopment Commission owned, and ultimately arrived at this one, number one, because of its ability and impact to, ability to have impact in transforming downtown and, and having some notability and marketability. But in, but also because the Redevelopment Commission had put a lot of investment into this site to prepare it and get it ready for redevelopment and revitalization. With that, it applied a few years ago for tax credits through the state of Indiana, and unfortunately, we were unsuccessful. We just barely missed with our scoring that year. It's a very competitive process. And from there, the, the state of Indiana had reached out to us and indicated that they had a special project known as Moving Forward that they were hopeful to deliver in Lake County. And they encouraged us to take our plans and, and submit through that RFP process. We were one of 10 applicants and we were selected as the group that could perform a development in Gary. Both developments were initially planned for East Chicago. And we made a pitch as part of RFP that their need for new housing options more dispersed throughout and, and ultimately with our partner Northwest Indiana Community Action Agency and through support of Gary, City of Gary and the Gary Redevelopment Commission and the Gary Housing Authority, we were selected and have- um, we were selected and have, um, from there moved forward with our primary funding source. Uh, some of the exciting components, uh, about moving forward that go above and beyond, uh, just delivering quality, high-quality housing, um, is the, uh, the project is gonna have a, a lot of innovative components. Uh, number one, it's gonna be a net zero building design. We're using a passive house building standard. Um, and this standard has probably been deployed as, as few as, uh, a dozen times in, in and around metropolitan Chicago. It's a really high-advanced system, uh, building type that will preserve energy, minimize rent expenses on, on residents. Uh, in addition to that, we're gonna have a solar roof on the building and, uh, over the parking lot, a carport system that will have a solar panel, um, uh, array on it. Um, and with that, we're able to produce as much energy as we're, um, utilizing. Um, so this will be a great benefit for residents as well as minimize our impact on, on the environment. Um, NIPSCO is partnering with us on that to provide a net metering agreement, uh, to support that effort. Um, we will have 38, uh, units, a mix of one and two bedrooms, kind of targeting the workforce, uh, young professionals, uh, folks that, uh, want, uh, to, to, to live and be near downtown and the services and amenities, uh, that downtown can provide. Um, in addition to that, those are mostly upper four units. On the first floor, the development will include 4,000 square foot of commercial space. It is a mixed-use development. Um, that commercial space, we have tenants for that. Um, in one portion, uh, Northwest Indiana Act, Community Action will, um, operate a WIC clinic, a women, infant, children health center, um, uh, that will be available to residents of the community. As the community, the whole, as a whole, the, um, Gary market is actually lacking that, uh, it's a product and a service that they provide throughout the county. Um, but, um, they do not have a facility here, so it'd be a great opportunity for them to be able to serve families and, and, and make sure families have access to healthcare needs. Uh, in the other portion of the, the commercial space, they'll be developing a workforce training center. And they have, uh, multiple partners, uh, in Ivy Tech, Indiana State, um, and many others who are gonna provide various continuing education programs, empowerment, training, culinary arts, um, various, um, just regularly scheduled events and functions to help support, again, residents of the community as well as, uh, residents of Gary at large. Um, so with that, um, it's around an $11 million investment. Um, we'll also have a commercial-grade greenhouse that's gonna provide healthy foods to residents. And, um, you know, with our partnership with, uh, Urban Faith Farms, uh, in Gary, uh, they are gonna be able to, uh, operate that and further their mission in delivering, um, and supporting, um, produce for residents in Gary. Um, we're also gonna have a unique car share system that's gonna provide residents with access to, um, car share, uh, on an hourly basis. Um, and, uh, car, bike share systems. It's a really unique product and opportunity, we hope. Um, and with that, um, all of these special features and innovative, um, uh, features of, you know, heaven expense. So the city, I'm sorry, the state, uh, is, is providing their primary tax credit funding, has really, um, requested and to roll up our sleeves and work with communities to identify additional sources and ways to fund, um, what, what will be the very highest of quality housing in Gary. Um, and, um, so with that, we have, um, been working with the community development department. Um, and they've assisted by, uh, providing some home funds. Um, in addition to that, our initial application to the state, um, did include, uh, a letter from the previous administration that, that supported, um, those home funds as well as a tax abatement to help, um, uh, help us bring this development to fruition. Um, in addition to that, we have gone out, um, to some very unique sources like the Federal Home Loan Bank of Indianapolis. Um, they've provided a commitment for, uh, an additional $500,000 in, in AHP funding. Um, we've also got funds in there, um, from the state of Indiana themselves. Uh, and so altogether, uh, two different sources of perm debt. Um, we've been able to fill the gaps and to be honest, this tax abatement is the last piece. Um, and we're really hopeful and excited about serving, uh, residents of Gary with some really nice housing. Um, we're gonna have onsite, we'll be fine, job creation in the WIC clinic and in the, uh, community action offices. Um, so we're really excited and hope it can be a, a magnet to draw new investment downtown. Um, this development, as mentioned, was really part of a multi-phase development. We're, we're hopeful to come back and, um, show you some of the other phases and types of, uh, the housing we can provide for additional community. And, uh, one thing is for certain, I will make sure, um, moving forward, that in addition to our conversations, um, with the city and with, uh, Redevelopment Commission, that we are keeping you in the loop as, as we bring, uh, those potential new opportunities forward as well. I, um, sorry to get to you so late. Um, we did have previous council introductions, um, last year as we went through site finding approval process. Uh, some of you may remember us being on the agenda then, um, but for new members, um, sorry, we didn't get to you till now. And, and anything I can do, uh, whether it be at this meeting or after the fact, feel free to, uh, reach out with questions and comments. And we'll do our very best to, uh, answer those for you. Um, any thoughts from there?
Um, you, you spoke about the commercial space at the bottom. So is all the commercial space, is it fully occupied at this time or do you have more?
Yeah, we have a lease, um, that's in its final version, um, that, uh, will be signed as part of the closing. Um, and that will fill all 4,000 square feet of commercial space.
I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
So I guess part of my concern is that by having a nonprofit, and I'm assuming the WIC organization is a nonprofit, that at some point, when you are paying the full tax, you're going to have a, we're still gonna get a lower tax amount because they're a nonprofit, right? In terms of how they, how it's assessed, wouldn't their tax exemption help to reduce your overall tax liability for projects?
The, so our partnership with the not-for-profit is a for-profit subsidiary thereof. So, um, the ownership entity for the development is a for-profit subsidiary and we will and do pay taxes. Um, they will be setting up a for-profit subsidiary of their organization to be the owner with us in that entity. So while they are not-for-profit, their ownership in the building is a for-profit subsidiary and is taxable.
So you'll be, you'll be fully taxable the same as if it went these way?
Yes, I'll defer to, um, Dan just to confirm. So, you know, I'm not speaking out of my legal, um, expertise.
And Councilman Godwin, I, full disclosure, I am not an attorney. I'm an economic development professional, but it's my understanding that the project is assessable as a taxable piece of property with the project owner that is fully taxable.
Okay. And the second question, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, is, what is the, I see the exhibit and it has the various deductions amounts over the next 10 years. What is the projected total fiscal loss, uh, to the municipality, uh, should this pass? That is to say, what dollars would we otherwise be getting that we won't get, uh, if this deduction is given?
So I can answer that technical question, uh, and I do have a, we do, we have run a schedule that shows what the impact would be, but to be, to be accurate in your answer, because the, because the city's taxes are based upon, for the most part, based upon a general levy or a variable tax rate, you don't lose any dollars in your levy. Now, there is a circuit breaker impact to the city, which we calculate, and I can provide that information to you in the report we prepare for the city. Um, however, the only quantifiable impact to the city or any other unit, overlapping taxing unit, would be to their cumulative funds. Now, that's typically the city's cum capital fund and it's typically material, it's, it's dollars. I can, I can pull that information for you and get that, give me a couple of minutes. I'll pull it up and, and provide that to you. My screen, you'd be able to see it.
Yeah, 'cause I think what I'm basically asking is, is how much money are you saving over the next 10 years by getting this deduction? Maybe that's the better way to ask the question. What is the savings to Broadway Lofts LLC?
Okay, I do have that, I do have that. Well, the host has not able me to share my screen, but I will give it to you verbally. And I can provide that report to you, Councilman Godwin, and to all those on the call and in the meeting. But in general, the total taxes that would be paid over 10 years, uh, is about $911,000. And the tax savings to the company would be about $669,000. It's at a 75% deduction of assessed value for 10 years. That's what was negotiated.
Got you, so that's about $240,000 that we would collect over the next 10 years.
Well, you would still collect the $911,000 in taxes. But what happens are, what happens is that the rate is then adjusted slightly higher because your rate is dependent upon the city's levy. You will always receive your levy minus the circuit breaker impacts, except for the cum funds, cumulative capital funds. The, the rate is fixed. So if the assessed value goes up or down, then you'd either lose or increase, you would have a decrease in levy or an increase in levy. But if the city levies in their general fund for $10 million, I'm just using a raw, a random number, $10 million for its general fund. If this deduction is applied, you're still gonna receive in your general fund $10 million less the circuit breaker. You'll still get the same amount of money. It's just that your rate is slightly higher. But the rate for cum funds doesn't change because it's fixed.
Uh, Dan, Dan, um, Mr. Bodig, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Isn't, um, where this facility would be built, isn't it inside the double-track TIF also?
And that is part of the resolution on page, uh, I wanna say it is the now therefore clause. Bear with me here. I believe it's the second now be it therefore resolved clause because the statute requires that the common count, that the city's common council identify if the property for an ERA is located within a designated allocation area for the purposes of tax increment financing of the redevelopment commission. So to cover ourselves all the time, I will always place a phrase in there that's, or a textual clause that states the area is within an allocation area or is not within an allocation area at this time. I'm trying to cover both yourselves as the council and the redevelopment commission. So it is the consolidated allocation area.
Well, technically, the city wouldn't lose any money because already, that they're TIF there anyway. So if my city wouldn't get anywhere, anywhere.
Exactly. So if any, and that is a very astute assumption, and I, I, I laud you on that, is that if it was not, if there was no ta, if their tax abatement was not offered and approved, the incremental assessed value would then go to the redevelopment commission to become tax increment that's, that's then distributed to the redevelopment commission.
Say any other questions?
I see that Mr. Bidner is on the line. Uh, are you there, AJ?
I am Councilman Godwin.
Thank you. I just wanna confirm, I, I'm by no means an expert on government finance. I know we have some members who are, uh, but I want to just get your affirmation that what Mr. Bodig, so A. B. described and that it will have zero fiscal impact on revenue coming into the city of Gary. There'll be no loss from our doing this.
You mean no impact on the current, uh, general fund?
Yes, it will not change the dollars that we receive from property taxes.
That, that's correct, uh, because it is within the footprint of the consolidated allocation area. And, um, uh, Councilman Brewer, uh, you'd asked about the double-tracking. The, the boundaries for the double-tracking, uh, what they're calling, uh, by state statute, the TDD, uh, the boundaries have not been set yet, uh, within the city of Gary. And I don't believe any other municipalities have adopted them yet. Uh, we're actually as a municipality, not to go off on a side quest, but they are, we are currently working with the RDA, uh, on drawing those boundaries, uh, just as an aside. But, uh, Councilman Godwin, to answer your question, you're correct, because it is within a TIF district, uh, or allocation area, more specifically stated, it won't impact the current, uh, budget of the city. And Dan will have a better kind of technical, granular knowledge as far as how much assessed valuation a specific project would have to kind of generate in order to actually change the levy, generally speaking. Uh, but what you'll see is with our tax rate at, what is it, Dan, about 7.99 or 7.98?
It is seven, it's 7.9737.
Yes.
Well, in that area.
Right. So how, basically, if it was outside of an allocation area, the amount of actual assessed valuation that would have to kind of increase in order to, we'd see a lowering of our actual assessment rate before we'd see a change in the levy?
Okay, and I, I just wanna, I may even ask for that in writing, uh, because I just wanna make sure I understand what I'm doing. And I'm not, I totally support development, the area clearly needs it. And we, we need to see growth, development. I hope it's, it's, uh, works well with what Gary Housing Authority is planning to do in that whole corridor. So I get it. And I just want, I also know that we can't afford to lose any revenue. And so I wanna make sure, number one, that I understand what I'm doing. But number two, I know the general public pays a lot of attention, uh, to tax abatements. And I know in my area, I will get a lot of questions about it, uh, if I vote in favor of it. And so I wanna make sure I can explain it, uh, to constituents. And lastly, I just want to know, we do have a CBA ordinance. And I believe, uh, Councilman Brewer, if we give tax abatements for projects over a certain amount, and I think, uh, these numbers, it might implicate that. I wanna know from the administration, specifically Mr. Bidner, um, how do you expect, or do you expect in any way, uh, to hold Broadway Lofts LLC to be in compliance with our CBA ordinance?
Well, this would be the first project that would potentially be, uh, would meet the threshold, and I'd have to double-check the ordinance itself to see what that threshold is, uh, for the project. However, uh, the project in and of itself is a, in multiple ways, a community benefit because of the, the type of project that it is, both with the, uh, aspects of the amenities that are there, with it being net zero, with it being, uh, what is it, 60, basically 80% AMIP?
Uh, it's 70, and, yeah, 70.
Right. Uh, of the, the structuring of the project itself, the, and Pete did a good job of kind of discussing the layers of what it takes to kind of finance a project like this for the development costs itself. Uh, because the long-term operational expenses are, uh, basically the rent that's collected, uh, and Pete, feel free to jump in on the performance side of this, are very slim from an operational standpoint, based on the quality of the development as well as what's being provided in the form of, uh, the, uh, you know, net zero, the, uh, the metering, the community garden, as well as, uh, you know, some of those other aspects of it. Uh, so it's part of the kind of, from what I understand of the CBA, of the, the sauce that goes into, how is this a benefit to the community? But we'd have to take a look to see what, you know, depending on the level of incentivization, specifically in the tax payment, how that would apply to the project.
And, and I believe it's around a half a million or so. Um, I, I will confirm that, but I would certainly want to make sure that before it comes before the council on third and final, I think we're supposed to go through multiple stages of this, that we do in fact have an opinion about whether the CBA applies. And if it does, what are the implications of that? Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Councilwoman Atkins?
I do have a couple of questions as well. Um, I think some of them might be for AJ and then some probably for Pete. Um, so I'll go through the list and again, um, just trying to get some detailed information in case the concerns come up during a, a case the concerns come up during an upcoming meeting that we have on Friday. So looking at the document, there was a section of the resolution that spoke to section 14 of the Act and it spoke to the council or designated being able to impose a fee. I just want to get an explanation in terms of how does that work? I know they said that the fee will be collected from the county treasurer and auditor to be, I guess, given to nonprofit organizations. So can that be explained to me and then can I also understand like what, what is the dollar value or how does that work?
May do that if you'd like.
Dan.
Councilman Brewer, I can explain that if you'd like.
Yes, yes.
So by statute, under section 14 of the Economic Revitalizationary and Assessed Valuations statute, the city council or a town council can impose a fee on the tax savings realized by a property owner as a result of an assessed valuation deduction or tax abatement. So in essence, the city of Gary has since, I want to say 2016, applied the language to, applied the language for the imposed fee to be collected. What happens, Councilwoman, is each year, the, each year that the taxes are due, the auditor will calculate what the realized savings were from the deduction that was applied. So in this case, we're estimating a deduction of about $3.9 million. They would calculate what would have the taxes been if there was no deduction? And then the difference between the two is the tax savings or it would be the, you know, $66,000 a year. The project owner would receive an invoice, but a manual bill or an invoice from the county treasurer stating that this imposed fee is due. That imposed fee by statute is then identified and designated in the resolution, in the Form SB 1 resolution, to a nonprofit entity that is involved in economic development or the furtherance of economic development. Typically, it's a redevelopment commission, it could be an economic development commission, but it has to be a nonprofit economic development entity as deemed by the council. Now, again, I'm not an attorney, but it could be a school. I hesitate to go through a list of who's been given the dollars, but as long as it is an economic development entity, and in the past, it's gone to the city of Gary's Economic Development Corporation and the last several have gone to the redevelopment commission for purposes of redevelopment throughout the city.
Sure. So Councilman Brewer, that's one of the reasons why I brought it up. And I know there's a current change in terms of, I guess, the Gary Economic Development Corporation or no?
No, there is no change.
So, you know, I just want to understand when that appointment becomes, what are we going to do as a council to address that portion of it?
And Councilwoman Atkins, I normally keep that open also. I've identified it as a redevelopment commission because that's what I was instructed to do, but it's at the discretion of the council where those dollars go, as long as they are an economic development entity.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Atkins. Very good point. You know, I certainly will lobby and push for part of those funds to go to the Gary Economic Development Corporation. That is the body where we have the president of the council has a seat on the Economic Development Corporation as well as another council member. So I think that would be the appropriate place for part or all of those funds to go. I don't know what the committee chair thinks about that, but I certainly will push for that.
I agree.
Another question, if I may.
Yes.
So I'm in discussion with Pete earlier today. One of my concerns also was about MBE involvement. And so Pete did confirm to me that the prime contractor is the MBE out of Indianapolis and about 27% is subs. So Pete, I didn't ask this question, so out of that subcontractor list, is there a certain percentage that we know currently to be local?
Um, you know, I have not gotten the breakdowns on percent local. Obviously, the whole entire project was bid locally. We did have a series of meetings in partnership with the city when the bidding occurred and invited the local trades, had some presentations and workshops, so they all were welcome and involved. I would have to follow up with you to see if I can confirm the local versus non-local from the subcontractor percentages.
Okay. I appreciate that.
I'll try and have that for you by the next meeting.
Thank you. So all of the bids had already been awarded, is that correct?
Um, well, so the bid process has been done and we have the bids and the bids have been opened and we know who the high, the bids are, but the construction contract itself and that work hasn't been awarded. That would happen as part of closing. At this point, we are hopeful to close end of June, early July. This is one of the last pieces to wrap up. We're going through a subsidy layering review with the state of Indiana and in finishing that process, we need to provide to them, in theory, the confirmatory, the declaratory resolution, excuse me.
On this? Okay. Okay. And then quick question about the Form SB 1, I guess, the statement of benefits. So that chart that's kind of towards the end, it shows the proposed, I guess, investment cost and then the assessed value. So just want to make sure I'm understanding it right. So the investment cost is valued at almost like $11 million, but the project itself is assessed at $589,000, is that correct? I just want to understand, what does that mean exactly? The difference between the two, between the cost, the investment cost, and then the assessed value of the proposed project?
Yeah. I'll do my best in not being, now I'm going to say I'm not an accountant and, or an assessor for that matter. But so affordable housing has, has an income challenge in that we are, as we take on the tax credits, we are committing to the state that we're going to make these units affordable. So the benefit to a resident of your community is, is what might cost, you know, $1,000 in market for a unit, we're able to provide to them at $800. And therefore, that family has more income, can save quick, faster, buy a house or pay some, pay for some education and however they see fit. So that's the goal of the program is to really keep rents at an affordable level. And so with that, there is very little cash flow off of these developments. So there was legislation, Supreme Court legislation rulings about a decade ago that tried to give some, some support to tax credit development in that while they do cost a lot of money to build, the actual income that is generated off them doesn't align with that. So instead of using a cost approach, which is what you would ordinarily do with a commercial building, they use what's called an income approach for calculating those assessed values and therefore with the limited incomes, our assessments do add a lower value.
So probably about 40% of that went over my head, Pete, so I might have to you again.
It might have been talking. Over my head a little bit. The long story short is there's a special calculation for this type of development.
Okay.
As a result in a much lower assessed value than cost value.
Okay, I got you.
I think the, the question she was asking, the, you know, the development cost itself is $11 million. The, the $500,000 number, number is not the actual assessed value of the property, it's the.
From the area or?
You anticipate the overall taxes over the period of 10 years to be for the property generally. So Pete, on a typical basis, from an assessed valuation standpoint, where we know, you know, what you see in a lot of municipalities and counties throughout the state, if it costs $10 million to do a project, the assessed valuation is somewhere around 75 or 80% of the either project cost or the market value of the property. Whereas with a tax credit property, with being an income approach, would you say that, what would you say typically percentage-wise?
Yeah. It's normally somewhere around, I'm going to guess, this is a little smaller than our usual deals, but they're normally assessed around two, two to three, really varying on market, anywhere from one and a half to three and a half million is an assessed value. I can speak to the savings. So if we're talking about a tax abatement that is generating 75% benefit and as Dan mentioned, it's going to generate roughly around $600,000. And so at 75%, that means that there is a new generation of roughly another new $300,000 in increment that's generated as part of the development.
Thank you, Pete and AJ. Last question. So, you know, it's important for me to articulate to any incoming developers, like the, the culture of the city. And so as I'm sure you all probably have already discussed, that location is where the historic Memorial Auditorium used to be, but currently the ruins are there, right? So is there any plans to incorporate maybe a marker or something of that sort to still hold some truth to our history within that area? I know the residents are going to be very concerned about that. So I'm not sure if that has been brought up, but I would like for the developers to kind of consider that as well.
Yeah. You know, somebody else, and I apologize, I had, we had been requested that and we're happy to do anything. The land where the, the existing memorial hall stands is actually part of kind of the more future phase area of the development. And so we have a nice open space that will just clean up and grassed for now, so I could certainly see us very easily putting up a memorial or monument. The only question I would have and maybe is for AJ and to say, I believe they have let that work from a demolition point or if they haven't, they will be very shortly. And so the question maybe is, is can be something out of that as far as what that company might be salvaging? I don't know if they're planning on salvaging that themselves, but certainly if there's access to a monument or something to help memorialize that, or we can create our own little monument piece as well if there's not something. But I think your point is maybe to more try to find something worth from, from the history that worth saving.
Yeah, something like that, just to ensure that we have some type of community connection and commemorate that particular place and area.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Atkins, that's been contemplated by the redevelopment department. Part of the bid specs that we put out was, and I had identified it last year with the previous city planner, Sarah Kabitis, of identifying pieces of what is, quite frankly, the Memorial Auditorium vestibule. And there's the keystone, there's marble, some of the very large limestone pieces that say, you know, Gary Memorial Auditorium that are, you know, in.